Welcome to the Lower Southampton Township Board of Supervisors work session for Wednesday, September 9th, 2020. The work session is being recorded and is about to get underway. I'll turn it over to Township Manager Joe Gatto. Joe?
Thank you. I just wanted to go over quickly the agenda for tonight briefly. Just go through some bullets. You have the consent agenda. There is one item that will be denoted on Item D under the consent agenda, and that's something that could be discussed. As far as the regular items, I believe Mike received notification from Matt McHugh with regard to the consideration of waiver for land development for Chase Bank. I believe that has been pulled. Is that correct, Mike?
That would be correct, sir. That was their intention.
Okay, so Item 2 would not be occurring for tonight.
Item 2 is off the agenda?
Yep.
Okay.
Further request?
No problem.
And then as far as Item 3, the Lieutenant can speak on that as far as the disposition of public records for the police department, and that's just a follow-up of the last meeting.
Right.
Item 4, Mr. Mark addressed dealing with the master casting agreement with Pennsylvania Department of Transportation. Item 5, which is the RDA grants, I will cover and go over them briefly. And actually, I can do that real quick right now. What I basically did in here is try to keep it as simple as best and to assist the RDA making easier decisions. What I would like to do in an effort also to help out the two firehouses would be to do a transfer in our capital reserve fund of about $30,000, $35,000 to each respective fire company. So they do not have to submit anything as far as the RDA and take the chance of getting shot down. So this way where the township is covering them for their capital items if they sort and choose. Under this Item 5 for the RDA, you would do a ranking at night, and we would approve it at the next meeting as far as submitting our various application grants that are redevelopment authority. In this given year for 2021, you of course would have the road paving program for $350,000. The Fire Marshal's Office would be getting or putting in for a mini pumper vehicle with an upsetting for about $186,882, which would assist them on the street as they're driving around during their inspections. Should cut down their time having to go to the various firehouses. This particular vehicle could actually handle in talking with line about 90% of the fires that they come across in the township, which would be good for the Fire Marshal's Office. The police submitted for three vehicles and an accident for, let's say, accident recreation system, which is called Total Station, and Mike could speak more on that. That was a submission for $273,862. Public Works is put in for a pickup of Ford 350 with the upsetting, the plow, the V box. That is for $52,868. So that request there between just for the township comes out to about $863,612. Now, yesterday at the late minute, we received notification from Towns Against Graffiti, which is Tagged. They are requesting a resolution of support for the four towns dealing with anti-graffiti efforts. The four towns are of course would be Middletown, us, Ben Salem, and I believe Bristol. So they would be putting in for a grant for $175,000, I believe. So what we're looking to do here is try to keep it as simple as a simple approach and make it easier for the RDA to approve our requests and also take care of the two firehouses as best we can. So that'll be a discussion point for tonight.
So Joe, can I ask you a question then? We'll be asked to prioritize those items in an order of most important being number 1, number 2, number 3, number 4. How many items will we be prioritizing then? 4, 5?
Hold on one second. 1, 2, 3. You have 4 plus than the one which would be whether you do a recommendation for a resolution for the towns against graffiti. And that's a joint effort with four other towns. Then you would be putting together a request for $175,000.
Okay, and is the lieutenant, I think there was a couple of questions about who's responsible for how much, you know, who's going to absorb the cost or the hit for that $175,000? How's it going to be split up? Is the lieutenant going to speak about that a little bit or not?
He could speak on what issues he has come across in the township with regard to tagging. But as far as the $175,000, I mean, the only people that would really know that would be Tag itself and the RDA. So I mean, we could potentially, if it's split between four towns, be losing, you know, close to $50,000 of allocation there by doing the resolution. But we've done it in the past. I believe the last time we've done it was in 2017. So and typically, we do make a yearly contribution to Tag in an amount of $3,000. So that's a yearly thing that we budget for also.
Okay.
So Joe, what was the total on that, RDA?
The total amount just based on our request was $863,612. And that kind of falls in line with prior years. And most likely, our expectation should be to be in a range of maybe a high of 500 or a high of 600, hopefully getting that request approved by the board.
Do you think, Joe, that this year because of the financial hit that has been taken by the casinos and everybody else, we should expect a lower amount?
It could be lower, but the RDA basically is based off of a July to June budget cycle. So in reality, they ran from July of 2019 all the way through to June of 2020. So the impact is not as great, and I'm sure their collection efforts were lower than the prior year or the prior cycle, but not drastic. So we should be able to get somewhere in the ballpark of what we received in prior years, I would hope for.
Okay, thanks.
So that's Item 5 that we'll be discussing tonight. Item 6 is Kim with regard to the Back in the Blue event and Russell Elliott. That could be, Kim, did you want to speak with that with regard to Matt too?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, I had told Ray before the vote actually comes down, I could, you know, enlighten the listening and viewing public in regards to the plans of the event.
Okay. And as far as the insurance, the insurance is in place that's typically, you know, that we typically have for events. But the thing is that we need to have the social distancing in place and, you know, the mask feature. And it's typical things. We got to be or abide by the terms and conditions of our insurance policies. So that's the only thing I would say is a caveat. Then the last, I believe the last item would be Item 7, which is the consortium Roxol joint bid, and Mark can speak to that initiative.
Joe, going back to Kim's request, that and the insurance company and us abiding by their policy, like we did for the other one, do we have to check with them to make sure that, you know, we're good to go with this?
It's the same place. I hit him with the same group of questions that I had on the first one, and everything was fine. And it's in the terms and conditions of the policy. So, you know, as long as we have the social distancing and we abide by the CDC rules and regulations, we should be fine.
And the amount of people that can be?
As well as the amount of people, absolutely.
Okay. And before we move away from the agenda, I have a question for Bryce. Can you hear me, Bryce?
Yes, yes, I can.
Thank you. Item 1D, there's going to be something that comes up, I believe, about the accounts payable for August 26, 2020, and one of the vendors. Usually, you know, in the meetings, the consent agenda is approved as one complete agenda item. Should there be an issue about one specific item on the overall consent agenda? Should we sever that item for a separate vote or motion from the rest of the consent agenda?
That's what I would do.
Okay. So when we get, so when we get to Item 1D then, yes?
You're, it seems like it's just with you and Joe so far, but I, for some reason, I'm being able to catch the majority of what you guys are saying, but not all. He can recommend something that I can.
Has the sound gone off?
It's in and out.
Yeah, it's going off from time to time.
Yeah, kind of like frozen.
Do you want to try going out and coming back in, Kim?
Is anybody else experiencing the same issues? I don't know. I don't know whether it may be.
I'm having the same issues. The sound goes in and out.
Yeah, Ed just cut in and out too just now.
I heard Ed fine, and I hear you fine, Kim.
Me also.
It's hard for me to listen to you, Kim.
Yeah, same. Yeah, same with you, Joe. Yeah, or Ed.
So can you clarify what we're going to be doing on 1D? Is it already pulled out? Are we going to pull it out? What is the?
What's the vendor that there's a problem with?
I can't hear anybody right at the moment.
I can hear you.
Can you hear me?
I can hear you, yeah.
Okay. I mean, instead of, we should try to get everybody back where we all hear each other, otherwise we're repeating ourselves.
Well, I can hear you, Ray.
Okay.
Can you hear me, Ed?
Very, very lightly.
I can hear you fine.
Yeah, I can hear you fine also, Ed.
You two are very, very light.
Okay, how about Kim? Can you hear us, Kim, or not?
The loudness is fine. It's cutting in and out with some of you guys from time to time.
Well, the loudness is not good for me.
I, like, I'm looking at my screen now. I see two of them.
Yeah, you're freezing.
That has anything to do with it.
Is there some way I can raise your voices with my computer here?
Can you turn the volume up, Ed?
I'm not sure where that is.
There should be a speaker over around F1 or F2, something like that, a speaker button.
Yeah, I got that, and I got that turned on.
Okay. And there should be a volume adjuster there where you can have it all the way up to 100.
Now, right there, Ray, you were, your words were slowing up.
Okay. Well, it is getting near my bedtime.
Yeah. I don't see anywhere where it can increase my sound level. I got it. It's on or mute. That's it.
Okay.
I don't know.
I think Peter's playing with it a little bit. I don't know what can be done.
Well, with all due respect, Kim, if you could reboot your phone and rejoin, that may help you. Make sure you are connected to Wi-Fi. That's one thing, because I could see it is your connection issue. You do have the slowest connection right now that I could see.
Okay, Peter's talking to me.
Mr. Shannon, it's a matter of your volume control on your laptop. When you see it on the right corner bottom, there's a volume button. It looked like a little speaker, and you got to click on that to raise it, so.
My, Peter's speech to me is fine.
Okay, how about mine? Ed, can you hear me?
I can hear you fine. I can hear Peter fine.
Can you hear me, Ed? You're coming across clear on my side.
Is that Joe?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, I can hear you pretty good.
How about me, Ed? It's Deb.
Very, very light.
It's distant for me, too.
Can you hear me?
I can hear you, too, yeah.
Ms. Deb, you may want to come closer to your phone. It may be the distance that's not capturing all the sound.
Well, I don't have, I'm not, you talking to me, Peter? This is Ed.
Ms. Kaplan, she just pulled up the microphone, and you should be able to hear a little better.
How's this?
That's good, Deb.
Just barely. I don't know.
All right.
So, I mean, we can try to continue, or you always think I should reboot them, you know, you tell me.
Yeah, you're freezing, Kim.
I do strongly recommend, Kim, you do reboot your phone. If you are able to hear me just now.
I can hear Peter fine.
Yeah, like, Kim's frozen right now again.
Yeah, yeah, I can, you know, disconnect with you guys. Pete, can you hear? I'm going to sign off, and I'll reboot.
Yes, yes, please.
Can you hear me better like this?
Yes.
Yeah, you sound fine, Deb.
That's a little bit better, Deb.
Okay.
Hey, Lieutenant, successfully joined in.
I got in.
And I could see you have a real high-speed connection at your house. He's actually in your house right now. Check the back.
He's a show-off. Lock the doors.
Peter, you can see that on our internet?
No, no, his screen quality is showing up as a 1080, so, which means that I know he has a real good connection, the internet speed-wise.
I think mine's really slow.
Well, yours is okay, okay.
Now, I know we have gaming, fancy gamer, so I know we have high internet, but I'm using my phone, so I don't know if that matters.
Yes, it does matter if you're using your phone. It does downgrade unless you get that 5G phone. Which is $2,000. It came down, Joe.
I think Joe's still on the flip phone, though.
That's right.
That'll be Ed's Christmas present to all of us, a new 5G phone.
I did the CARE Act, right?
No problem. I don't hear anybody now. Nobody's talking.
We're waiting for Kim.
Kind of waiting for Kim to log back in.
Oh, okay. Mike can tell you gets the prize for the best background.
It's beautiful out back, yeah. It's my backyard.
Very nice.
Thank you.
Quick question while we're waiting. As you guys know, we are recording. What should I do about the recording? Should I stop and redo it or?
I think Kim's back on.
Back on.
All right.
Keep our fingers crossed.
Does it seem better now?
No, your screen quality is even better now.
Do I look any better? That's the important thing.
Always.
Terrific. All right, we'll stick with this then.
Okay, so where are we?
Well, you need to look better, so it's all right.
Oh, you ain't kidding. No argument there.
I think when Kim experienced the technical things, we were talking about Item 1D on the consent agenda and severing that one vendor on Page 1 for a separate motion to approve or disapprove.
Yeah, that's what I would recommend.
Okay.
Can we get out what vendor?
Just hold that one item out?
It's Vendor 5298. I think Genova Burns. It's $883 or something to that effect, if I'm not mistaken.
$883.50.
Yeah.
And we have to separate that?
I believe there'll be a request to do that, so that's why I wanted to ask Bryce if that's the way we should handle it.
Okay.
And he says yes.
Yeah, if I'm, you know, not jumping ahead, I would request to do that, you know, for the meeting.
Okay, no problem.
Thank you.
No problem. All right, Joe. All yours.
All right, so we want to go back to the respective department heads. So we'll start with Mark. Mark has a couple of items on tonight's meeting.
Okay. First off, J.D. Morrissey just completed a storm sewer installation job at Rosewood and Second Street. And the sewers are eight to nine feet deep. They installed 100 and some feet of pipe and six new inlets. It was a pretty impressive job. They did it in less than a week. This is in conjunction with the milling and paving. They're coming in, and they're milling, they're going to start milling tomorrow from what they're telling us. And they're supposed to, let me get my list there. They're supposed to start milling over on Williams Lane, Bridle Path Road, Woodland Road. Then they're going to go to Central Avenue, Hampton Avenue, Steel Road, and Old Street Road. So that's the only thing they've told me so far. I don't know if they're going to mill all 20 streets first and then come back and start paving them, or if they're going to have a paving crew come in a couple of days afterward. That all depends on their manpower. So we'll find out when they get into this. Okay?
That was posted on the Township's Facebook page, I saw. Is that how the residents are notified? Or was there any other notification?
The webs, Chris puts it on the website and on the Facebook page.
Okay.
But we're at Contractor's Mercy there, you know, we could put something on there. And so because of weather or breakdowns, the schedule gets altered somewhat, so.
Yeah, and I also know too that they actually, they posted the roads today too. That they plan on doing. So the residents that live on the roads will know. They did a nice job with that.
Can that be on the TV channel as well?
That I don't know. But they just, John Morrissey Contractors, they just finished a lot of work in Upper Southampton. And I was watching them do that for the last few weeks because I was checking to see where they were. And they did a really good job. I'm confident they'll do well for us.
Okay.
That's about all I have to talk about today. The master casting agreement, do you want me to talk about that or just do that?
You can mention that also.
Pardon me?
You can mention that also about the master.
What this master casting agreement is, is when PennDOT mills and paves the state roads, we have numerous sanitary sewer manholes and a few storms sewer manholes.
Hey, Mark, could you speak louder, please?
Okay. Okay. This is loud as it can go. When PennDOT mills and paves the roads, they have to adjust our manholes, raise them or lower them to get them to the finished grade level of the new road. And what this master cast agreement is, is just, what it is is, how can I explain this? I got tongue to a stick, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Their contractor does all the work, and we get charged $1,028 for each manhole adjustment. So, and also sometimes we need to supply new manholes because the ones that they're ripping up out of the road are not in good enough shape. In that case, we always keep manholes in stock in the Public Works yard. And that costs about $313 a manhole that we stock. That's in addition to the adjustment that they charge. And in that agreement, it says for nine years, but I always understood these to be, go for three years because every three years, we have to renew them. So that's basically what it is.
And that would also be budgeted over a three-year period also in your sewer fund?
Yeah, and listen, at times, they won't charge you for two or three years. They'll do work for a year or two, and they don't charge you, and you're waiting and waiting. So you just have to make sure that money that's budgeted every year gets rolled over into the next because all of a sudden, they'll hit you with three years' worth of charges. So they're supposed to repay Brownsville Road in 2022 and Bridgetown Pike in 2024. So I estimate, I rode the streets, and it looks like there's 27 manholes that I see that need adjustment between the two. So that's the figure I went by.
Thank you, Mark. Thank you.
Okay.
All right. Lieutenant, did you want to go over then, I guess, maybe the disposition of public records? And then maybe some comments on, you know, the tag, the graffiti, just graffiti in general with regard to the township?
Okay, so we have this agreement that is written up. I have the resolution number in front of me, but we're looking to get rid of some of our records that we no longer need. We store most of our police records are stored underneath the District Court Building in what we call the Archives area. And we have records back there from basically the inception of the police department, some arrest records, all the way to general records that are kept, overtime sheets, payroll records going back to 1995. And we basically have ceiling to floor stacked with boxes back there, which we need to try to get cleaned out. So we have the municipal records retention act, and we're hoping to get that passed and get that cleaned up. And that'll happen once it's approved.
And do you make, do you have Titan come out and do the shredding of them?
Yeah, we're going to have officers on day works. We're going to make arrangements to have one of the shredding companies come out. Officers will take the records right to the shredding truck and watch it get shredded right there. That's what our plan is.
And I spoke to Mike today about adding some terminology to the resolution, and Mike agrees. So before we vote, I'll mention that. I can mention it now if you want me to.
Well, you had a question, Deb, last time, right, about the retention of DUI body cam footage and so forth for beyond the 30 days?
Right, well, it said, well, we went through the DUI with Mike, and it said 30 days. I'm trying to find where that is exactly.
It's near the back of one of the last couple of things.
Thing 23, Deb? Is that it?
Now, that was a physical audio tape, so it'll be retained for 30 days if not used as evidence. But what I spoke to Mike today was number 8. 8, number 3. Where it says, "All other cases will be retained for 20 years after close of investigation and to add end until exhaustion of appeals process." And then we talked about, because I talked to Mike about the sex offender cases, and we talked about how that's destroyed after it's been transferred to where it has to be transferred to the proper agency. So I was okay with that, with the word "all." And also, number 22. Training records will be retained as long as of administrative and legal value. So there are the two things that, we talked about other things, but basically, they're the two things that we said Mike was agreed upon to change the wording on this.
Yeah, and it doesn't really change too much.
No, it didn't really change too much. It's just the exhaustion of appeals process, I really wanted that in there. Because obviously, after 20 years, close of investigation, there could be appeals going on. And I just want to make sure that that was covered.
And just to touch on real fast, this has nothing to do with our body cam footage. Our body cam and in-car video footage, we have a whole separate policy for that. And that's retained based upon the DA's guidance and how they want us to maintain our records. So arrests are kept on body cam footage for up to two years or longer if the case is still pending. And the other body cams footage, if guys go to a routine call, that purges it for 30 days. And that's all by policy through the DA's office as well. So this doesn't affect any of the evidentiary stuff we do with the body cams or the in-car footage. This is just basically for almost all the paper records. This is just basically for almost all the paper records that we have stored at District Court. And this is something we're probably going to look into doing every year or every second year. So we don't get to the point of having. Twenty five years where the records stored in the, in that building.
And this, and this um, resolution, it's, it is in line with the municipal records manual. At Harrisburg, which was approved, it was amended actually March twenty eighth of twenty nineteen.
And I I can answer that. It is. I I drafted the resolution, based it mirrored almost identically off of the municipal records manual. So. To the extent that, you got it right there. Uh, so to the extent that we want to add in a little extra, that's fine. Um, as long as we're not making it more restrictive.
Well, all right, right. It's not really more, I don't think it's more restrictive. I think it's just, um, if you want to speak to what, uh, well, if you're okay with my wording on.
Oh, yeah, that's fine. And by restrictive, I, that was a poor choice of words. What I meant is, as long as we don't um. Make it so that we're not keeping for the records for as long as suggested by the manual, which we're not doing, so it's fine.
Yeah, we could do longer, but we can't do less.
Mm hmm, yep.
I bet, I bet a ball on this, Bryce.
Well, you can call me next time. Not a problem.
Okay.
There, Mike, you want to talk about the graffiti part?
Yeah, Joe and I had a conversation last night about the tag program and um, the value to the township. So um, I I I called today, tried to get some numbers about what we've, what we spent versus tag. Uh, at least in this past um, year versus what we've paid out for tag. Uh, and for those of you who don't know, Tag painted the bridge all over Buck Road, um, a little less than a year ago. And they also have done some um graffiti removal. In the, around the Blairer recently, in the back of the Acme and the back of the Feasterville Plaza. And the estimate for that graffiti removal, just for those three jobs. It was somewhere in an area of twenty eight hundred dollars, um, between paint pressure or spray rentals or spray. Air spray rentals and chemical that was used to clean up those sites. So, um. I I think we get our bang for the buck with with the tag program. When you drive through the township, there's no, there's very little graffiti scene. We don't have graffiti on the bridge abutments. Um, we have an ordinance for graffiti removal. That requires business owners and residents to remove graffiti within seventy days of being put, being put up. Uh, and with the towns against graffiti program, that's been done and it hasn't caused the residents a pain. Um, tag comes out, takes care of all the cleanup. Um, if they have to paint the entire back of a building to make it look proper, they've done that. Um, they use the chemicals when they can. And they've done churches. We had a church graffiti on Good Friday. Um, the, the guy that was. In charge of the program, he was off that day. He came in and cleaned it up for us before services. Um, it's been, it's been very good for the township. I I think it's something we should continue. It's. It's a quality of life issue. When you drive through town, you don't want to drive into Feasterville and come on up to us on Pike or Street Road. And driving by and seeing graffiti on buildings and signs and and retaining walls and stuff like that. So. Um, I don't have the exact numbers because I really don't have a chance to get everything together um, between um, just today. But we use them quite a bit.
Mike, I have a question for you. I don't know if you can answer it. But do we still donate, what, three thousand or five thousand dollars a year to to tag, right?
Yes.
Okay, and this grant that Tracy Timby has put in for, for a hundred and seventy five thousand dollars. Um, it it's, it's a, uh, it's a collaborative grant with Ben Salem, Bristol, Middletown and us. For this hundred and seventy five thousand. Now, does that hundred and seventy five thousand dollars? The way I understand, the way I read it, her request is that all of that goes to tag. To use for their cleanup.
Correct.
Processes so, so forth, right?
And then in municipal donations, they supplement that. So when they go over budget or they need more equipment. Uh, when they have to purchase a new truck, all that money goes towards that. Uh, there's, so. The way the grant's written is Ben Salem, I believe, Middletown, Bristol and us.
Right.
So, but there's also lower Makefield Township is involved in the program. They're not listed in the grant. Um, Falls Township is Bristol Borough is Humerville and Pendell. There's actually nine municipalities involved in it. The larger municipalities, Falls, Ben Salem, Middletown and Ben, well, Ben Salem doesn't. They all contribute five thousand dollars. And then the small townships and borough, or us, as a smaller township than them. And all the small boroughs, they donate twenty five hundred dollars or three thousand dollars for us. So we're not donating the same amount of money as every other township because we're smaller.
So they're not asking us to increase our yearly donation. They're just asking us to co-sign for this RDA proposal, right?
That's what my understanding is. And and that's the, the RDA's been funding tag for about the last three to four years since the RDA started. Um, that's kind of what, that's one of their big things.
Okay, thanks.
Is that hundred and seventy five split equally amongst the four townships?
It's based upon use. So if if we have tag four hundred times in the township, it costs us whatever it's split, however it's split. Evenly. And if we haven't been forty times that year, it's, it's not based upon. That's just a figure they have, I guess, based upon what their estimate for their costs are every year. So it's not a prorated cost. They're just going to the RDA, asking to fund a program for that hundred and seventy five thousand dollars to the benefit of the nine municipalities and boroughs.
Okay.
And then the five thousand dollars of municipal obligation, that that's each municipality is donating at five thousand, three thousand or twenty five hundred.
Thanks, Mike.
Yes.
All right, uh, Ryan. Did you want to have a couple of discussion points?
Sure, the uh, we're still doing the food drive. It's still going uh, real good. We have three. Full bins right now that are getting ready to go to Saint Stevens. Um, that's open Monday through Friday, eight to four at the old district court. Uh, for August, we had fifty three calls for the month. Thirty three of them were from the tropical storm. Uh, that we got hit by. Uh, this year, fire prevention in the schools is canceled. So we are working on a slideshow slash like PowerPoint. That Nishami said we can give to them and it'll give it out to the teachers to go over the classrooms. So the kids can still get some fire prevention in. Uh, most of the businesses are all following uh, the safety rules. We had no issues. With anybody and uh, getting in to do fire inspections. We've been doing good with them. Uh, that's all I really have.
Ryan, Ryan, I mentioned something on the uh, that mini pumper too also, the benefits of it.
Yeah, so for that, um. With having a mini pump on there, we'll be able to handle, you know, approximately ninety, ninety five percent of the calls that we get into township or at least. Um. Have it under control or contained until one of the fire trucks can get there right now with us. If we're out on inspection, we have to go to a firehouse and then we're waiting for. Members to get there. So that's wasting more time with this truck. We'll just be able to go right to the scene and start entering uh, aid faster.
So, thanks, Ryan.
No problem.
All right. Matt Gilbert, are you there?
Yeah, I'm here. Good evening. I'm getting a way better connection on just audio. For some reason, when I do the video and the audio, I I can't hear anyone. Um, can you guys hear me okay?
Yes, sir.
Yes.
Great. Uh, first, I totally want to support uh, Lieutenant in the tag program. They have come out to the parks at a moment's notice when there's been offensive graffiti or just graffiti in general. And it's been removed almost immediately upon the completion of the. Sports. So I start with tag group and the way that they keep our town looking, I think it's a much needed endeavor to pursue. Um, second to that is uh, probably the first thing that uh, Kim will want me to speak on is the. Uh, conclusion of the ride. So the ride's gonna start over in Ben Salem. I think Kim's gonna get into more of the details. Uh, their arrival will be at Russell Elliott Memorial Park, which um, can accommodate. That amount of people so long as we don't exceed two fifty. And Kim and I have it, have talked about ways to do that. During these times, we'll have what we need in place, sanitization station, signage encouraging social distancing and the recommendation of masks. Um, it it should go smoothly. I don't foresee any issues upon their arrival at Russell Elliott Memorial Park. During the manager's report, they're gonna have, uh, I'm gonna give a plug for this weekend's uh, Travis Manu nine eleven heroes run. Uh, the race starts at nine AM. There will be no pre-registration in the park. Everyone must be pre-registered online and.
Yeah, and that closes at midnight tonight, the online.
Doing any in-person registrations, no paper and pen, no cash exchange. So, uh, that's been just.
Hey, Ray.
Yes.
Can you give us a thumbnail sketch? I can hardly hear him.
Yep, um. Outline that.
I think. I, from what I gather, uh, Matt gave a synopsis of the uh, Travis Manu nine eleven heroes run, which is supposed. Is scheduled for this Saturday, September twelfth at nine AM. And the cut down on person-to-person contact and social distancing issues. There will be no race day registration. Traditionally, it races, people come up and register the morning of the race at rate, to wait till the last minute. They're suspending that for this race and registration, online registration closes tonight at midnight. So everyone has to be pre-registered. And then they can come up and the bag that they get will have their number and everything in it. And it will limit contact, um, human to human contact.
Thanks, thanks, Ray. Matt, uh, I kind of told Matt to kind of sign off and sign back on again, just to, to see if we could get a better uh. Voice from him, uh, as we get into the regular meeting. Um, most likely we'll end up going to uh, or last on the list, let's say it this way. Certainly not least, uh, Mr. Mike Attai and Zoney. Mike, you want to have some uh, discussion items mentioned?
Last but not least, well, as long as my child's not on Fortnite, we'll have plenty of bandwidth, so. Um, uh, so we're making some good progress. Um, I went down and made some relationships with the court, the district courts. Um, and talked with them and we filed our first citations. So we'll be moving, uh, starting moving people through that if they're not in compliance. Um, we're pushing together a property maintenance log. So we have a um, better handle on what the status is of our. Uh, overwhelming amount of complaints and issues around the township. Um, I like to measure those and see where we are enforcement wise. Um, I can tell you I'm a little bit more aggressive than uh, some previous folks. So if you're getting complaints, please let me know. Um, I try to educate them first and get compliance through education. But when that doesn't work, um, you know, sometimes stronger methods are uh, or a cup of encouragement is needed. Um, a fee schedule, uh, so you should be seeing a rough draft of the fee schedule, if not your first meeting in October. Um, your second meeting, uh, and looking for adopting the, well, which will be the twenty twenty one fee schedule. Um, probably looking to adopt that in your November meeting or your December. Um, I have one other, a person in the township to meet with, or all the other department heads have given me their input. Um, so we'll be uh, coming in line with uh, our surrounding. Um, municipalities and kind of balancing things out and addressing any shortfalls that we have. Um, had a couple of meetings on some business development and uh, a potential projects coming down the road. Um, a firm believer in pressing the flesh and even in COVID nineteen. So I like having folks sitting at the table, trying to hash out any issues ahead of time. Uh, so there's no stumbling blocks along the way. Uh, we've changed some processes internally. Uh, between working with the police department and look, working with Public Works. Um, uh, making sure things are dotted and crossed before moving forward. So we don't have any missteps or stumbling blocks. Um, everybody's still, still good. Uh, I haven't lost anyone yet. So um, we're gonna keep uh, keep doing the good things.
Thank you, Mike. Mike, I mean, just regards to the uh, fee schedule, that's uh. That's probably been something that's probably over two years since it's been revised. Um, so I appreciate Mike jumping on that issue and taking care of that for the township. Um, thank you, Mike.
Absolutely.
Thanks, Mike.
Um, I think that's, I think that's basically all that I have unless the, the board has any other, you know, comments. We have about ten minutes before we would start the uh, the formal board meeting.
I don't have anything, uh, any other board members?
No, I don't have anything. I said.
Deb, sure.
Did Matt get back on? Matt back on?
He was trying, he was trying to get back on, told him to jump on.
Yeah, I'm here. So can you hear me better now?
Remember when um, there was the grant for the signs? How's that going?
The sign said. The, the sign for Russell Elliott and the posts. Had been ordered, I believe, uh, there's a check to be written in tonight's payables to get that. Uh, should be moving forward with the Russell Elliott sign first and then we'll follow up with the play week sign.
Okay, great.
Can I, can you hear me better?
Yes.
Okay.
Did you have any other thing, Matt, that you wanted to mention, um, as far as maybe go over your meeting that you had last night with regard to?
Okay, sure. Uh, we had, we had our first parking record meeting since March. Um, so it was great to meet with those folks and we had a lot of field usage requests to review. Uh, we've been receiving a lot of outside usage requests, which i- is it a. I guess during these times, kind of an expected rate. Based on the fact that organizers and administrators have canceled fall sports. Therefore, there's kind of like pickup games and we'll call it like a sandlot organization of dedicated players and coaches who want to continue. Um, while I respect the, the love of the game and the want to go play. We, the township, can't take on that liability of a unorganized or pickup league style. Even though they've gone through the formality of submitting their requests. Um, it's, it's difficult to deny a usage request that doesn't have. An overlapping schedule problem from our, our in-house users. But uh, we've seen a, a high frequency of um, pickup leagues, we'll say. So. Other than that.
Anything with the, the pickleball, the pickleball type scenario?
We did uh, entertain the idea of a temporary uh, pickleball court being set up over at uh, Russell Elliott Memorial Park. Uh, tennis courts, it's there in the, in the back of the park, uh, near the playground. Uh, pickleball is just an overlay on tennis. It makes it a little bit of a smaller court. You use a different type of ball and a smaller racket. It's been really popular here recently, especially for those who can't go to the gym and play racquetball or squash. So, uh, we're. We made the decision as the parking record to allow a, a temporary. Setup of pickleball courts on those courts and it will not deter from tennis so long as they're not overlapping uses.
Thank you, Matt.
And everything's great.
Thank you.
Thanks, Matt. Joe, do you want to uh, give everybody about six minutes to stretch their legs or do whatever they have to do and then come back here at about seven twenty eight?
Sounds good, sir. Uh, before, before we go to the uh, public meeting, I do want to recommend, if you're not connected to wifi. Please connect your devices to your wifi if it's available.
Okay.
Most of the issue that we are having right now is because your device is not connected to wifi.
Got it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Peter.
Thanks, Peter. So we'll meet back here in five minutes at seven twenty eight for the public meeting?
We need to log out to the next one or just stay in here, right?
I think we stay in here, but I think we should mute our microphones for those five minutes, maybe.
If it helps, I'll stop the recording and then start it back up when, when we start the uh, uh, public meeting.
Sounds good, Peter, at seven twenty eight.
Seven twenty eight.